Good evening and welcome to the December 1st regular City Commission meeting of the City of Orman Beach. It is 7:00 PM and we are in the commission chambers. I hope you felt welcomed this evening by our Public Works Director Shaun Finley and our Deputy Public Works Director Kevin Gray. They were your greeters as you came in this evening. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you tonight. To my right, your left, Recording Secretary Cassidy Ritz. Our city attorney Randy Hayes. Next to Randy is Commissioner from Zone 1 Dwight Selby. Next to Commissioner Selby is our Zone 2 Commissioner Troy Kent.
Good evening.
And to my left and your right, Deputy Mayor and Zone 3 Commissioner Susan Persis. And our Zone 4 Commissioner Rob Littleton. Give me a hard time about that. Down in front this evening is Joyce Shanahan, our City Manager. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley. We have two chiefs tonight, one for police and one for fire that have joined us and they're over. Again, to my left, your far right. And for those of you listening online, I'm Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Orman Beach. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Pastor Floyd Narcisse. He is the new pastor at the historic New Bethel AME Church and we want to welcome him. That's a beautiful, well-loved church in our community and we want to welcome him to Orman Beach and he's going to provide our invocation. If you'll make sure that your cellphones are silenced and please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us all look to the Lord in prayer this evening. Lord, we thank you for this day, God. We thank you for allowing us to be here today. Lord, as we come this evening, God, we ask that you will touch our mayor, our commissioners, our chiefs. Lord, touch the people of Orman Beach right now, Lord, because we come this Monday, this Tuesday, Lord, to discuss the business of your city. But, Lord, we can't do nothing unless you send us. So, Lord, anything that's not of you, we ask that you would leave it where it needs to be, God, and have your way. Let your light so shine on this city, shine on this meeting. Let your people of God understand that we can't do nothing unless you do what you're supposed to do, and that's to be God. Forgive us for our sins that we have committed by thought, word, and deed against your Divine Majesty. Have your way on this meeting, God. And, Lord, anything that's not of you, leave it at the door, God, for we want to be successful in this meeting. We want to discuss the business of your city, but help us to do it out of love, L-O-V. Help us to love our neighbor. Help us to love our mayor. Help us to love our commissioners. Help us to love one another so we can do what you have called us to do, be the city like no other city. Help us to be that city that people say, "That's the city I want to be a part of. That's the city I want to work in. That's the city I want to grow." Help us to do all that together in unity and love. This we ask, in Jesus' name we pray. Let everyone who has breath say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are lucky and honored tonight to be able to present a proclamation. I think we had tried to do this back maybe in March or February and, of course, COVID hit and we have had some scheduling difficulties ever since that time and everybody's been super busy. But for our city to be able to honor a former mayor whom we all know and have worked with is just, it's a wonderful opportunity. So at this time, I'd like for Volusia County Chairman and former Orman Beach Mayor Ed Kelly to come forward. We're going to bring Mary Margaret up at the end for pictures, but if you would just face the audience, and we're going to do this in a socially-distanced manner, but I'm going to read this proclamation. "Our staff knows you so well and they love you and respect you. They did such a nice job on this proclamation. When I read it, I was, they always do a great job, but I was really blown away. So I'm excited to read and present this proclamation to you. Whereas Edward Ed Kelly is a graduate of Belmont College in Nashville, Tennessee, and a former sales distributor and president of European Operations for Hawaiian Tropic. Ed Kelly and his wife, Mary Margaret, moved to Orman Beach in 1980 and raised two children, Brian and Catherine, in our charming city. And whereas in 1994, Ed Kelly was elected to the Orman Beach City Commission to represent Zone 3 and served through 1997, through a special election in 2005, he rejoined the commission as Zone 3 Commissioner until 2010, when he was elected to the position of mayor. He served the City of Orman Beach as mayor until 2016 before being elected to serve as Volusia County Chair. He also has served his community in many organizations over the years, including as Chair of the Volusia Water Alliance and the Water Authority of Volusia, Chair and Executive Board Member of the Volusia Council of Governments, and as an Executive Board Member of the River-to-Sea Transportation Planning Organization. After his many years of public service, Ed Kelly will end his term on the Volusia County Council in December of 2020. And he can tell you the days, hours, and minutes, but we won't get into that. Whereas Ed Kelly's proudest accomplishments while on the Orman Beach City Commission involved establishing responsible fiscal policies that are still in effect today, such as a dedicated millage for roads, renewal and replacement funds, pension reform, contracting services for solid waste, and setting aside funds for stormwater projects. He learned from fellow, former mayor David Hood that you could disagree without being disagreeable and let that motto influence his relationships with those he worked with. The commissioners who served with him lauded his integrity and character. And whereas Ed Kelly believes that local public service is all about love of your community and leaving something better than you found it, through his decades of service, he has strived to make Orman Beach a great place to live, work, and play for all citizens. Ed Kelly always looked for ways to govern smarter, more efficiently, and more fiscally responsible. He will continue his work in that regard as a member of the Local Government Efficiency Task Force, a position that he was recently appointed to by Governor Ron DeSantis. And whereas Ed Kelly is a dedicated husband and father, he has decided to retire to spend more time with his family. He has shared his heart, humor, guidance, and sometimes even his baking skills with many members of the Orman Beach community. Through his years of service, Ed Kelly touched many lives, including those he served with, the veterans he recognized and honored, and the constituents he represented. He took the City of Orman Beach to new heights and left lasting impacts on his local community. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Orman Beach, do hereby proclaim December 1st, 2020, as a day to recognize Ed Kelly and encourage all residents to join me in wishing him the best in his well-deserved retirement and in thanking him for his many years of dedicated leadership and service to Volusia County and the City of Orman Beach. Congratulations, though." We also have, and we want to get a picture of you and Mary Margaret, as we present this to you, a flag that was flown over the United States Capitol and it's been framed for display purposes. And we just want you to know how much we respect and love you and appreciate all you've done for our city and for Volusia County as well. So congratulations and thank you. We're going to come in for a picture.
Absolutely.
I just want to say one thing. If I didn't do anything else, I got Volusia County Council to recognize the 16 cities of Volusia County. We all are part of Volusia County. We even got them to join the League of Cities. That was a goal of mine, that was one of the five priorities that I had, and that was to make sure that the county continued to work with us instead of at us or against us. And I think that has proved that doing that, we've become much better at working together, sharing thoughts and ideas, and that was huge. So, thank you all for this tonight, and I can't be very funny now, so anyway. Everyone have a Merry Christmas.
Well deserved. And now we will move on to audience remarks, and I'll recognize Pastor Narcisse again from the historic New Bethel AME Church.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Floyd Lindsey Narcisse. I'm the pastor of historic New Bethel here in Orman Beach, Florida. I just want to come here not to complain, but I want to commend the police chief of the police department. As you all know, there's situations occurring across these United States of America dealing with Black Lives Matter, dealing with unarmed black men being killed for all kinds of reasons. And every Wednesday since I've been here, there's been one side, this side, and that side. I want to commend the police force publicly to upholding the law of doing things that some of us may not agree with. But I want to just commend, come here today and say, "I thank God for the police chief that we have here in Orman Beach. I thank God for the police department and for the police officers who put their lives on the line." That's all I want to say. Thank you for the city. Thank you for the police chief who's having an open-door policy to the community. And I want you all to know, as an African-American pastor in the city, I support, we support police officers. And it's good to be in a city that supports the people and that does the right thing for the right cause, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next is Ike Leary. That'd be great, yeah. Thank you. Good evening.
And all staff. I just got a couple of things. One was last Saturday, we had our shop a small Saturday. It was great. Kudos out to Julia and Becky from Orman Main Street. Great job, great job. Next thing, we got the plans for the new bait shop. It's going to be nice. Women's going to be proud of it. Meeting tomorrow again with the engineer and the architect, and I hope they were going to get the plans finalized and get this going. That's all I got. I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador, and good to see you well. Next is Jim Schultz.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard Drive. Just a little reminder, something that I have a hard time getting out of my head. The Floridation Toxic Substance Control Act litigation in the 9th District Circuit Court in San Francisco is meeting again on the 10th of this month. So it's a little bit more than a week away. They've already had two prior meetings. The last meeting was a real quick one. They only sat down for a while and tried to hash out potential agreements between the EPA and the plaintiffs. And the judge made it known to them that they should be looking at the best data, which was the most current data that was put into amendments. And also what they did was they, it's real important you have standing in a court. And for the specific issue, the plaintiffs added nine women that were either pregnant or working towards that goal so that they could be the ones representing standing as far as having fetuses or babies that would be in the at-risk group that we're supposed to be protecting from. That sounded real good. Actually, there have been three state courts that Floridation has lost, but the federal government said, "You have no access to this. You don't have standing because it's a federal issue regulated as a contaminant." Strangely, though, the EPA Union Headquarters out of Washington, D.C., also sued the federal court to halt Floridation. They were found not to have standing. They seemed to have excellent knowledge of a risk that they thought should deserve standing, but they were told as experts, the most prestigious experts in the field, that they had to go shut up and sit down and not go to court. So it's nice to see that happening, sort of as an amusing thing, if you can consider some things amusing. The FDA, in dealing with minuscule amounts of fluoride for infants, says that you have to be a doctor and write a script for a child to get a fourth of a milligram. In other words, one-third of what's in an average quart of water, but that's only if it's a pharmaceutical grade and not delivered by a tanker truck.
Thank you, Jim. And we'll move to the approval of the minutes. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review and posted to the city's website. These are the minutes from the City Commission meeting of November 4th, 2020, and also the minutes from the City Commission meeting of November 17th, 2020. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Take a motion to approve.
I move approval of the minutes from the meeting on November 4th and November 17th.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. And now we move to the consent agenda. Does any member of the commission wish to pull any item off of the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item N, as in Nancy.
Got it.
Move approval of the consent agenda, absent item N.
Second the motion.
Consent agenda, absent item N. Colby, if you would, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and 7N.
Resolution number 2020-187, a resolution accepting a proposal from AM Weigel Construction, Inc., to provide construction management services regarding the McDonald House restoration, East and West Elevations Project, authorizing the execution of a work authorization thereto and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2020-187, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. Just need a motion and a second for discussion.
I move approval of resolution number 2020-187.
I second the motion.
And Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted us to discuss this only, and I've had conversations today with the city manager and also with Public Works Director Finley. And, but I just, I thought the, I thought the write-up was a little confusing. I wasn't exactly, you know, it wasn't completely clear to me, and so I just kind of wanted staff to explain exactly what we're doing with this first phase on the McDonald House.
Great. We'll go to Shaun Finley, Public Works Director.
Yes, sir. Just to kind of follow up what we're doing with this one, we had put in for a proposal. We, we've obviously, we've spent a lot of time with McDonald House. We did a project about two years ago where we took that one wall of the tower, did it kind of as a pilot study, to give us an idea of what we could do to realistically expect what was going to be entailed to do this project. With that, we saw that it was not just the cladding, not just the siding. There's some structural work behind it that would need to be done. So we used that as our, as our basis of our estimate, have a pretty, what we think is a pretty firm estimate. You know, I'm hoping it's on the conservative side. I'm hoping that we can do it for less than what we're doing. We went back, we revisited with AM Weigel, who did that first work. They are one of our continuing contracts, construction managers at risk. We've done a number of projects with this. We trust them very thoroughly. When we looked at it, we took a very hard look at it and what it would entail, and we decided to take half of it in one chunk. That way, we're not taking too much, biting off too much. As we've seen with, with what's gone on here in Main Street, building renovation, historic renovation, i- is a very precise type thing. And when you do it, you uncover, you pull back those layers of the onion and you may find things you don't know. We didn't want to get further ahead of ourselves than we were prepared to do. When doing that, what we'd like to do is we'd like to take the two walls that we're proposing, the east wall, which is the one that's adjacent to the gas lamp shops, and the west wall, which is the one that faces the parking lot coming in. We think that those are the two that are in most need for, for being renovated at this time. Proceed with those and take it step by step, looking at it from progress, taking it week at a time, two weeks at a time. We'd like to come back to you all with, with updates as we're going through this before we get to, to prove it. That way, we can let you know, hey, we're staying on schedule, or we're slipping behind, we're, we're going a little bit over budget, or, hey, it's not as bad as we thought it was. We're going to be under budget and we think that we'll be able to go to those next two sides. So before we get too far along, we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can do to take a very prudent approach to this and know that we're, we're doing a good job for, for the citizens of Orman Beach and for the building itself, so.
And Mr. Finley, is it a, is it a cost-plus arrangement with Weigel, or is it a gross maximum price?
It's a time and materials-type contract where they've got a management fee on it. So, so what they, they're getting paid for what they do, essentially, and it's not a lump sum that, that we're going to have an expectation of doing 1,000 square feet and it ends up being 1,200 square feet and they hit us with a change order. We're doing it as a, as a time and materials. There's an estimate, we've done takeoffs, they've done takeoffs, so we think that we know what it's going to be, but obviously, if, if, the siding itself is going to be pretty precise. It's the structural that's, that's a little bit of that unsure thing, and we won't really know all the structural until we get some of that siding off. We've got it budgeted to do all of the structural here, and, and I think that's more than what we're going to need, but we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. So I think that by taking this approach where we're taking it one step at a time, two walls at a time, that we're not getting too far ahead of things and we're not letting ourselves get in trouble.
And it's $448,650 is the...
That, that's our, that's our estimated.
That's your estimate?
Yes.
And who... Where does the money come from that? What are the sources of money?
There's three sources of money for this. We've got ECHO funds. We were successful in receiving an ECHO grant, so that ECHO grant, what we did was we maximized the money available from Volusia County from the ECHO. $400,000 is the most they will give to a project. That's what we got awarded from, from, from Volusia County for this ECHO. The Historical Society also pledged $100,000 that they raised through, through their, through their members and through their fundraising. The balance of that would be, the balance of the project would be from, from the City of Orman Beach.
Very good.
Thank you. Nevermind.
City Manager Shanahan.
Also, it, it was difficult to mobilize the entire building at one time, so we didn't want to get too far ahead of ourselves for that purpose as well. So they decided to attack that west wall next to the shops and then the, the east wall and then the west wall, but we didn't want to have the whole building torn apart all at the same time.
Any other questions or discussion? Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and now would be the appropriate time, if any commissioner wishes to comment on any of the consent agenda items. Commissioner Persis.
Yes, I'd like to comment on item G. You know, all these meetings, when we see that the city's purchasing, you know, trucks or cars for the firemen or for the police officers, and, you know, you look at those pictures and they're all like 20 years old, these, these vehicles that they've been using. So I just think, I, I love seeing that they're getting new, you know, we're getting new trucks for whatever area it is, but this one is, you know, was a great deal with almost like $7,600 under the budget that it was required for. So I think it was a great job that the city saving some money there and, you know, getting new vehicles that we really do need. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Selby.
And to that point also, item H, three new police cruisers, $90,000 for the, for the vehicles themselves, and then it costs another, just for taxpayers' benefit, costs another approximately $15,000 for light bars and radios and all the other police-specific stuff. So the cruiser ends up costing about $45,000 all in, 30 for the car and then 15 for the other stuff. So it's not cheap, but it's, you know, good stuff. And one of the vehicles that I think we're, we're decommissioning is a early 2000. So this is like a 17 or 18-year-old car, so to Commissioner, to Vice Mayor Persis's point, this city runs the wheels off of vehicles before it, before it trades them in, decommissions them, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Joyce, to you and the staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? If not, we will move to public hearings, and I will open the public hearings, and we'll start with 8A.
Ordinance number 2020-50, an ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts and official zoning map of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the City of Orman Beach Land Development Code, by amending the official zoning map to rezone certain real property totaling 18.47-plus acres located at 350 Clyde Morris Boulevard, from Volusia County B2 Neighborhood Commercial and R2 Urban Single Family Residential to Orman Beach B10 Suburban Boulevard, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2020-50, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I don't have any cards.
Move approval, ordinance number 2020-50.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and 8B.
Ordinance number 2020-51, an ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, establishment of zoning districts and official zoning map of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts and official zoning map of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the City of Orman Beach Land Development Code, by amending the official zoning map to rezone a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 6.06 acres located at 1020 to 1044 North US Highway 1, from B8 Commercial with a planned business development overlay to planned business development, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2020-51, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. The applicant, Kim Buck, is available for questions if needed, and other than that, I don't have any cards.
I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Great. Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8C.
Ordinance number 2020-52, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a third amended development order for a planned business development known as US1 Business Park, authorizing the construction of two buildings consisting of 7,810 and 6,600 square feet, along with associated site improvements, to be located at 1020 to 1044 North US Highway 1, authorizing mini warehouses, warehouse storage, and the indoor warehouse storage of recreational vehicles and boats, establishing conditions and expirations of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2020-52, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards.
Move approval of ordinance number 2020-52.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8D.
Ordinance number 2020-53, an ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts and official zoning map of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the City of Orman Beach Land Development Code, by amending the official zoning map to rezone a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 8.2 acres located southeast of 1255 North US Highway 1, a portion of Volusia County parcel number 4206-00-00-0020 from R5 Multifamily County parcel number 4206-00-00-0020 from R5 Multifamily Medium Density to PRD Planned Residential Development. Authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2020-53, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. And I'll ask Planning Director Stephen Spraker to walk us through D, E, and F, if you can take them all at one time.
Good evening, Steve Spraker, Planning Director. So this is an application for Ormond Grand that has three components. The three components are a zoning map amendment from R5 to planned residential development. So that provides the overall framework for the project. The next item is the issuance of a development order to allow 60 multifamily townhomes and site-specific plans for stormwater utility, landscaping, fencing, and building architecture. So that is the actual development plan for the project. And the last zoning action is a preliminary plat. This is the subdivision of land for both the industrial parcel and the multifamily Within your packet are several correspondence that we received. So everything we've gotten on this project, we provide to the City Commission. So all the information up here from Mr. Attorney Bosch, the Ormond Lakes Homeowners Association, Ms. Brown, Mr. and Mrs. White, and there was an email chain after the planning board. So all that information is in your packet. The Ormond Grand project is approximately 11.86 acres. This is US Highway 1 right here, and then the entrance to Ormond Lakes would be right here. So it's kind of tucked in. Previously, in the 2005, it was zoned industrial. So this entire area, which is gray, was industrial reaching back. The applicant at that time did an amendment to allow residential, believing it would be a more appropriate transition from the industrial on US1 to the Ormond Lakes property. So there are three areas. The first area remains industrial, and that would be the access point into the project. The second area is the 8.2 acres for the multifamily townhomes. And the third acre are two wetlands that already have conservation easements and that would be preserved. The project did go to construction after getting a special exception in 2007. They did some infrastructure, some utilities, some grading, some site clearing, and they eventually, with the economic downturn, the project stopped. And here we are today in 2020, and they're restarting the project. The first zoning action is rezoning this R5 portion of land to the planned residential development. The purpose of that is really to get to the next item, which is the issuance of a development order. So this site plan is in your packet. The yellow areas are the buildings. Again, there's 60 multifamily townhomes. The wetlands are shown in this hatched area. Into the project site, this would be a private drive owned and maintained by the homeowners association. There's an emergency access easement that provides a second access for emergency personnel that connects with Ormond Lakes. This lot is owned by the applicant, so that would provide a second emergency access for the project. On the east side of the project, next to Lockwin Lane, there's a 20-foot natural buffer, there's a stormwater ditch, additional landscaping, and then there's a PVC vinyl fence that runs around the perimeter of the property. There is a poolhouse and a cabana located here for the 60 units. For this project, a key issue has been the stormwater. And as described in the staff report, there's really three areas of the stormwater. The first is the existing Ormond Lakes Unit 3, Section A. This was a subdivision that was built in 1996. This is the as-built drawing. And the stormwater is shown here in blue. So it's a system that is an open swale that's designed to go to a pipe system under Indian Bow into a retention pond that's along Ormond Lakes Boulevard and the Florida Power and Light Easement. This system, the drainage system, is actually within the lots. So your portion of your property has a drainage easement for the subdivision stormwater improvements. And the Ormond Grand property would be located here. This would be Lockwin, and the yellow lots are Cliffside. This stormwater system is owned and maintained by the Ormond Lakes Homeowners Association. So it's a private system. There isn't a city component to the system. As with most subdivisions, it's a privately owned and maintained stormwater system. When the project started in 2007, there was concerns regarding stormwater from the wetland, this is Ormond Lakes, the entrance, the wetland here, the wetland that extends behind the properties on Block House, and the properties along Lockwin. Basically, the water was staying in there and not moving. In order to resolve that, a drainage swale was proposed. This was after many meetings over a course of approximately a year. So a drainage swale was constructed where you see these blue arrows that goes into the Ormond Lakes 3, Phase 3, Unit Section A plant. The original design was to put this conveyor swale in Ormond Lakes. At the time, there was no drainage easements, and they couldn't get drainage easements from the property owners. So they moved the conveyor swale onto Ormond Grand, leaving that 20-foot buffer for the benefit of both projects. So this drainage swale goes through Ormond Grand, but it conveys the water for Ormond Lakes. This is the as-built along with this drainage swale. There was also the regrading of the original stormwater system associated with the Ormond Lakes Unit 3A project. This is the connection that basically moves the water from the drainage system into there, and then it goes again into Indian Bow and into that stormwater pond. The third stormwater item is the actual design for the Ormond Grand project. Through site plan review and through review of stormwater plan, staff has been able to determine that all the water that you see associated with this project is going into their two stormwater retention ponds. So this project is not draining water into that conveyance ditch or onto Ormond Lakes. So their water is staying within their property and then rehydrating the wetlands. The third zoning component is that preliminary plat. This would be the industrial area that would be platted and a public road with a cul-de-sac. This would be a public maintenance and responsibility. The industrial parcel doesn't require a planned development. It'll be a site plan review with a machinary wall and appropriate landscaping. The individual units for the multifamily townhomes would be platted. They'd be able to be sold as fee simple lots. And this is the overall plot showing both the industrial parcel and the multifamily, and then the surrounding Ormond Lakes property. At the planning board, there was conversations and direction to the applicant to go meet with the Ormond Lakes HOA. I know that has happened because I've talked to both representatives of the HOA and to the applicant. I don't, I believe they looked at different options for the Ormond Lakes Unit 3A stormwater issues, but I don't believe there's been a final resolution. Staff is recommending approval of all three items. Each item was recommended for approval by the planning board by a seven-to-zero vote. If there are any questions, I am available. We also have our civil engineer who reviewed the stormwater available.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen?
Thank you.
No?
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, the applicant is available for questions as well. Parker Mitchenberg. And I do not have any other cards for 8D. Just need a motion and a second.
I'll move ordinance 2020-53.
Second.
Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8E.
Ordinance number 2020-54, an ordinance approving a planned residential development to be known as Ormond Grand on approximately 8.2 acres, generally located south and east of 1255 North US Highway 1. Authorizing the issuance and execution of a development order for 60 multifamily townhouse units and associated site improvements. Providing conditions and expirations of approval and providing an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2020-54, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. This is 8E, the development order, and I don't have any additional cards.
I'll move ordinance 2020-54.
Second.
Any discussion or questions on the development order? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8F.
Resolution number 2020-189, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, approving the preliminary plat for the Ormond Grand subdivision of land. Establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2020-189, read by title only.
And again, other than the applicant, I don't have any cards.
I move approval of resolution number 2020-189.
A second to motion.
Any discussion or questions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we will close the public hearings and move to 9A.
Ordinance number 2020-55, an ordinance amending section 22-115, fee imposed, schedule of chapter 22, Water and Sewers, oh, oop, sorry, hold on. Oh, nope, that's right, of the City of Ormond Beach Code of Ordances. By increasing the water and sewer service impact fees, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2020-55, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I do not have any cards for 9A. Move approval, 9A.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we will now have reports, suggestions, and requests, starting with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioner. First of all, I wanted to update the commission on the police department's activities during Christmas. Right now, they're operating a Grinchbusters campaign. They're doing extra retail patrols to ensure shopping areas are safe. They're reminding residents that they are our first defense in fighting crime. If you see something, say something. Lock your door, lock your cars, and remove your valuables. And they're also doing extra patrols in neighborhoods to prevent attempts by porch pirates and car break. So they're really going all out this year. Also, you may have noticed that the, our strategic response vehicle was out this weekend with Phil the MRAP for Christmas toys for kids at Walmart. It was a huge success. They've got several other locations they're going to. This past weekend, they received over 100 toys, including seven bicycles, a lot of monetary donations and gift cards. So we're really pleased about that. I'm also pleased to early announce, Chief, that we were notified by the Volusia, I guess it's the Five County Crime Buster, Crime Stoppers Association, that offer Sir Ryan Mahalco was named Officer of the Year for the Crime Stoppers. So we're very proud of him, and they will be at our next meeting to present Officer Mahalco for his work. He worked on two very tough cases. One was the child death off of the trailer park, and the other was a serial rapist that he helped solve that case, and it incorporated cases from other counties. So really, great job by him. And he will tell you that it's a whole department effort, but we really appreciate all of his work on that. Secondly, the Casson Park Floating Dock and Breakwater received the Florida Planning and Zoning Association Award for Outstanding Innovation and Design. Sean Finley and another engineer, Alex Schuman, will go to accept that award next week, and we'll bring that to you at your next meeting. The economic development news, Volusia County Business Grant Program, Ormond Beach Stats. In Ormond Beach, we helped our businesses secure 524 grants issuing resulted in $1.5 million. So they applied to the County for CARES Act grant. You could have a bricks-and-mortar building, bricks-and-mortar business or a home-based business. And so we were the second most distributed amount of dollars outside of Daytona Beach. Daytona Beach had $1.6 million, and we had $4.7 million. So really, kudos to Brian and thanks to Stephen. They had sort of a war room of sorts. They, when the applications hit the website, they were receiving them as they were being processed. Becky Weedo in planning helped review to make sure they had their business license permit. Loretta Mosio was helping, our grants manager, was helping track down those that maybe didn't have all their information. And so they really worked hard, and they processed those quickly. So far, the county program has distributed eight point, almost $8.9 million to small businesses in Volusia County for CARES Act funding. Let's see, here we go. If there's anything else of major importance. Marion Bright on Main Street, we're kicking that off tonight. You did a virtual Christmas tree lighting. Kudos to the leisure services staff with that giant big switch. It makes me think of that Chevy Chase movie with all the Christmas decorations. Businesses are, for Marion Bright on Main Street, businesses are being encouraged to decorate in accordance with a theme, and we are offering, and offer various discounts and specials in an attempt to increase business in the downtown and help the businesses recover some of their losses. The Home for the Holiday Parade judges will award cash prizes. First place would be $2,000, second place $1,000, third place $750, and honorable mention $500. The committee will present the winning businesses with signage to display in their windows and will promote this event on social media. So we're hoping to have good participation. Those are great prizes for businesses that are in need this year and maybe helps reward their employees who've worked so hard to help them get through the COVID. Staff and, staff will have the city commission their families and Santa do a drive-through Santa parade coming soon. We won't share all the details because we don't want a lot of people out. It's just a drive-through. We're going to have Santa waving and welcoming the new holiday season. And just an update, you have a, you have a second meeting this month. You have it on December 15th, and then your first meeting of the New Year is January 5th. And then on Tuesday, January 19th, we'll have Dr. Sean Snath with UCF do a presentation workshop on financial forecasting for, and what the economic outlook looks for this specific area. He's really not dry. He's kind of entertaining, so it'll, it'll be interesting, to say the least. And then you have your regular commission meeting workshop. I'm happy to answer any questions. If not, good night. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Joyce. Commissioner Persis.
Yeah, I'm, so the drive-through Santa parade, we don't have a date?
There's no parade. There's no parade.
Right, but we don't know when we're doing it.
I can tell you privately.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Okay, I don't want people to think we're having a parade. We're just going to have a caravan, yes.
Right, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for that report, Joyce. A lot, a lot going on. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
No additional comments. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Deputy Mayor Persis.
Wow. Well, good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to also compliment Stephen and staff, anyone involved with that great light switch out there, because I actually tried to turn it on and off myself, because I really thought it was real. It looked great. It was just a perfect addition to the, lighting the Christmas tree virtually. It was amazing. I just loved it. I just want to, first of all, I want to compliment Mayor Partington for his letter I just want to, first of all, I want to compliment Mayor Partington for his letter to the editor last week. I don't know if everybody read it, but basically, it was looking for funding for the purchase of the lots at Plantation Oaks. And I really agree with his letter, and I want to always to preserve more land and save as much of our beautiful Ormon Beach environment as possible by using forever funds and state grant partnerships. And additionally, I would like for the city to expand the trail system in Ormon Beach by using echo funds and partnering with the county to increase outdoor recreation. The voters recently voted to approve forever and echo funds for the next twenty years by a supermajority. So hopefully, I hope all of you all agree with this, and there's a lot to look forward to and a lot of, lot of good possibilities out there. And since, I think that's really all I have. I'm just looking forward to the next few weeks. It's exciting that the weather is nice and cold right now, and kind of makes you feel like Christmas is coming. So thank you and good evening.
That's right. Commissioner Littleton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing further to add.
Thank you, sir. And Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick things. First, I had an opportunity regarding Riverbend Golf Course. I had the opportunity to play in the PAL Golf Tournament a couple of weeks ago at Riverbend, and that was the first time I had played there in a few months. And, you know, I was disappointed in the condition of the golf course, and, and not just the course, but also the buildings and the bridges and the catwalks and the driving range and so forth. So I'm not surprised that the, and I'd heard some rumors that the, you know, the financial condition of the operator was, of our tenant, was in trouble. And I, for one, would, would probably not support the city taking that golf course over. I think golf courses are extremely difficult to operate profitably, especially just eighteen holes, and in this market, in our local market. So I just kind of wanted to get that out there. The second thing is, I ran into State Representative Tom Leek the other night, and, you know, we are in the midst of, we meaning the greater Volusia County area, in the midst of a really exciting time on the state level. We have a lot of, between Paul Renner and Tom Leek and even Senator Wright, we have some very powerful, influential state representatives and senators. And he specifically asked me if we had some funding requests, and he's very involved in the budget process. And we really, the, the underlying message to me was, you know, look, guys, we, and I know there's going to be a lot of pressure because of COVID, you know, to, that they're going to say that there's not a lot of extra money, but with the leadership people that we have in place, I think for legitimate projects, we can get funding. So we really need to, and we got to do it quickly, because I think he said committees start meeting the end of this month, I think, or certainly by early January. So I just put that out there, that we should all be thinking about things that we would, and, and, you know, if we don't get funded this year, it's always good to get it in the hat, get them thinking about it, talking about it, and then maybe it happens next year or the year after. And then the third thing is relative to the Loop. I too very much enjoyed your op-ed, Mayor. I thought it was extremely well-written. I thought the, the references to the movie were great, and also to the, the, I forget the name of the organization, The Loop. Is it Save the Loop?
Volun-Cinec Loop and Trail.
Yeah, so, yeah, Cinec Loop and Trail. The hard work that they've been doing for many years in, in preserving the Loop was, was really important. And I just want to say that, that the, the idea that's being floated out there is interesting, but, but frankly, I, I don't get, it doesn't make sense to me to buy land that is a hundred and seventy-five feet off the road. I mean, we already, there's a hundred and seventy-five-foot buffer in Plantation Oaks. So to go west of that, a hundred and seventy-five feet, when the buffer for, for Halifax Plantation is fifty feet, so they have a fifty-foot buffer up there, so the Halifax, the Plantation Oaks buffer is a hundred and seventy-five feet, nearly four times as deep. Doesn't make sense to me to spend harder than taxpayer dollars to buy land that's further away from the road than that, when there are, there are actually four other parcels that are in private ownership on the west side of Dixie Highway. Of course, everything on the east side of Dixie Highway is already in public ownership, and that was as a result of the owners of that land, the National Gardens Trust, when they donated all that, a couple of thousand acres, to the, to the state. So I think we should focus in on the other vacant parcels that front on Dixie Highway. And by the way, none of those are in Ormon Beach. They're all in the county. But I, and they're north of Plantation Oaks. And they go up to, basically from Plantation Oaks up to the James Orman Park. So all of that land between the northern limit of Plantation Oaks, up to the James Orman Park, is four parcels that are privately owned. I've been in contact, actually with both of the owners of those properties, and have had some preliminary conversations, you know, just about various things. So hopefully, I mean, that's where I think we should focus our energies, and I hope, you know, I, I would hope that people would agree that just because it's vacant now doesn't mean it's going to stay vacant forever, and especially if it's in private ownership. You know, people own that land with the intent of building something on it someday. So that's, that's kind of the direction that, that I'm, that I'm working, and I would hope that we would all agree to, you know, work towards. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Kent.
Thank you. I'm so glad that Ed Kelly, Chairman Kelly, was here tonight, and we were able to honor him. My favorite thing that Chairman Kelly has done as the chairman of Volusia County Council is he got beach ramps opened in Ormon Beach. Ormon Beach residents were able to access our beaches under his leadership, and I will never forget that. I will also not forget the chairman calling me on two or three occasions when there were issues that were before the council, and he just wanted to run them by a guy that he said loves that beach, and I appreciated that he took the time to do that. That's the type of leader he is. And if he was calling me about beach issues, then he was calling many other people about every other issue, because he wanted the best information he could get. And what a fantastic mayor he was for Ormon Beach. Shop Small Saturday, Ike Leary, thank you for coming tonight and bragging about Ormon Main Street and what a great event that was for not only your business, but many businesses in Ormon Beach and for our residents to get out. I, just, it warms your heart to hear great things like that in our community, so thank you. And my last comment tonight is from Ms. Shanahan. Joyce, thank you for making sure that Ike Leary has a seat at the table from the, from the beginning with the planning process of the new bait shop that we're going to have. It's an important step and an important piece, and, you know, he, he looks at it from a different set of glasses. You know, I know that, I mentioned a couple of months ago, you know, I didn't think about it, but you got to make, you have to make sure that the, the live bait wells are installed before you put the walls up, because you can't get them in otherwise. And I wouldn't have thought of that, but Ike Leary knows that. So I appreciate you making sure that, you know, the proper stakeholders are involved. Again, kudos to your leadership with the city. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Ike, I pointed out that you're one of our ambassadors. There aren't a lot of those, and so we appreciate all you do for the city, including not only recognizing the Small Business Saturday folks, but the way you participate with leisure services on, for the fishing tournaments, providing hot dogs and, and fishing gear for the, for the children. It's a awesome thing, and we appreciate you. So I just want to make sure you, you know that and recognize you for that. Chairman Kelly, it was awesome to, to have him here tonight. He, as Volusia County Chairman, reached out to all the mayors on a regular basis and communicated. I mean, the lines of communication with Volusia County had never been better, and a lot of mayors commented how unusual it was, but yet how great it was that we were actually included in conversations and information. And he listened to our concerns and took them back and did what he could with them. So truly an honor to, not only for all he did for Ormon Beach, to honor him for what he's done for, for Volusia County and those relationships as well. Really excited about Detective Mahalco. That's the big award, is my understanding, for Volusia County, which we are always hoping to get when we, when we go to that awards ceremony, which was canceled, I guess, this year due to COVID. But just wonderful that he's being recognized. And, and I know, you know, different agencies have different situations year to year, so you're always going to have different winners, but it's just really awesome to see Ormon Beach being recognized and his hard work on those difficult cases. And it is awesome. It just shows the kind of person he is, that he gives the rest of the department credit as well. That's to, that's to his credit. And so looking forward to recognizing him next, next meeting. Also excited about the Casson Park Breakwater. That was a fantastic project, and obviously, it's been recognized for, as such, throughout the state. I think other cities are going to look at that and probably replicate it up and down the coast. And so wonderful that you guys did so much hard work on that, that it's working so well, and now you're going to be recognized, and Ormon Beach is going to be recognized as well. But thank you, thank you for that. Also, our Economic Development Director, Grants Director, and the rest of staff that worked so hard on the business grants. For Ormon Beach, with a population of our size, we're maybe two-thirds the size of Daytona, or maybe half, depending on what the new numbers show, but to be number two in the county in the amount of business grants that we received, it's because our staff worked so hard, so diligently, to help our businesses. And some businesses are still struggling, but many businesses were very much helped by that COVID business grant relief from the county. So kudos to y'all for that, and I thank you for your hard work on that. I don't know if anybody noticed, I got a tweet during the meeting from Obi, and Obi, I didn't realize even that he was here. When, when we flicked the light switch and turned the tree on earlier, I did notice Obi in the tree, and so he's followed, he's followed us into the commission chambers and brought some candy canes tonight, and he is the official Ormon Beach, well, he's been assigned to Ormon Beach, and he brought some cold weather with him down from the North Pole. And just wanted to point that out, if anybody wants a candy cane on the way out, but I thought that was great and just another way to, to get into the holiday spirit. So thank you for that tweet, Obi, and we look forward to seeing more of you over the next few weeks. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.